It is 7:00 PM. We'd like to call the Tiffin City Council meeting Tuesday, January 17, 2023, to order. Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Spar.
Thank you, Madam President. We're thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, and for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Spar. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Spar?
Here.
Councilmember Thacker?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Present.
Councilmember Leopard?
Here.
Councilmember Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Reesner?
Here.
Let the record show, all seven members of council are present this evening. Minutes for January 3, 2023, regular and committee of the whole were distributed. Any comments, questions, or corrections on those? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilmember Leopard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, oh, I'm sorry, recreation and public property, Councilmember Wilkins?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Economic Development and Downtown Planning?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole, does anyone see the need to schedule a Committee of the Whole meeting? Seeing none, we are now under reports of the officers. Your Honor, Mayor Don Yonatuno.
Thank you, Madam President. Many changes continue here at City Hall. As you know, City Administrator Dale Thornton has decided to retire. I have sadly accepted his resignation. His final day with us will be April 1. His knowledge and leadership has been a great asset to me, the city, and Mayor Montz before me. I have known Dale and his wife Reezy for many years. I sincerely appreciate his help and friendship in my new role as your mayor. I will be asking for council's approval of my appointment of Nick Dutrow to be your next city administrator. He is currently serving as the Director of Communications and Constituent Services here at City Hall. I teasingly call him my wingman. Nick is always ready to help me. His knowledge and background will be an asset to us. He has been indispensable these past few months, and I know he will do an excellent job as our new city administrator. This leaves us with another opening to fill. We will be taking applications soon for Nick's position. My hope and plan is to keep everything moving smoothly as we prepare for your new mayor in 2024. Meanwhile, department heads will start giving their annual reports starting in March. I'm starting to sign those up right now. Update on events, I sat in on the annual Main Street accreditation on January 5 with TSEP. Nick and I attended the freshman class of the Tree Commission Academy being held locally this year at the NCO ESC on the 11th and 12th. I attended and read proclamation for the MLK celebration last night at Faith United Methodist Church. It was a very nice presentation, and the singers from TU and Heidelberg did souls, and it was just absolutely beautiful. So, very nice job, ladies. And I spoke to the Seneca County Community Council earlier today to give them a state-of-the-city report. Upcoming events in January, the Tiffin 200 Committee will have their final meeting tomorrow afternoon to close out the event, and they did a very nice job of doing events for the city this past year. And that's my report.
Thank you. Dale, I'm so sad to see you go. I echo the mayor's comments of how, what a great asset you've been to the administration, and since I've been on council, I, my gosh, you're such a good support system. So, so sad to see you go, but congrats on retiring.
I've certainly enjoyed my time here, the seven years that I've got to spend with council, with the mayors, and with the department heads. I think the city is very well served by these department heads who I've had the opportunity to work with, and I'd like to thank all of them because they're the ones who keep the city running on a day-to-day basis with all of the things that have to happen, and the city is well-served by these fine ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
Oh, wait, I better make an announcement.
Yes.
The counter commission does need another person. I have filled almost all the positions except for that one, and that one is administered through the Salvation Army, if that helps you understand what that one means.
Thank you.
So, I can use a volunteer.
Councilmember Jones.
I'm not sure if this is the proper question, time to ask the mayor a question, but I noticed the parking lot over here to the, I don't know what direction, is behind me, is fenced off. Police cars are parked over to the old cleaners. Is something going on there? Is it being repaved or sold or?
No. TSEP is doing some construction work on the back of their building, and they need park, Klaus Construction needs parking.
Oh.
And so, they've asked us to clear out the area, which has forced our police department to move out all their vehicles, and so, no, just a chain reaction. Nothing's being paved, unfortunately, but that's why they're all out there.
And that question was for my benefit. No one asked me about it, but if they do ask me about it, I will be in the know.
Great. Anything else for the mayor? Thank you. Clerk of Council, Aunt Forrest?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have the report for December 2022. Total receipts for the month were $3,734,547.68. Total expenses for the month were $4,070,384.67. The general fund unencumbered balance is $5,353,940.6. Income tax receipts for December 2022 were $980,208.61. The total annual, that should say, increase, I think, total annual increase for income tax collections for December 2022 compared to December 2021 was $30,516.24. Year-to-date income tax receipts were up 11.07%. Portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for December 2022 is $121,544.67. The unexpendable balance for all funds is $36,127,103.55, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions for Director of Finance? Member Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Stand the report there, and then I was just looking on the letter from the Director of Finance, and it talks about unclaimed funds that are a year old. And I think I know the answer, but for the benefit of the people in the audience and who may be listening in, these nine checks, city has contacted these nine people to remind them, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Reesner?
I move to accept the December financial report and bank reconciliation from the finance director as presented.
Thank you. There's a motion to accept the finance director's report and bank reconciliation for the month of December. Is there a second? Councilmember Leopard?
Excuse me. I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. You, Director of Finance. Director of Law is absent this evening, so we will move into written communications.
Thank you, Madam President. We have mayor's request for legislation number 23-1, appointment of city administrator.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-1 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-2, appointment to the ADA Advisory Committee of Mary Franks.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 23-2 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-3, CSO 24 and 30, inflow reduction project.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-3 will be referred to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-4, OPWC Pavement Repair Program.
Mayor's request for legislation 23-4 will be referred to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-5, 2024 Road Salt Acquisition.
Mayor's request for legislation 23-5 will be referred to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F23-1, to amend the 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108, to appropriate funds into the capital improvement City Hall budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F23-1 is prepared for tonight as ordinance 23-2.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F23-2, to amend the 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108, to appropriate funds into the Police, Park, and Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission budgets.
Finance Director's request for legislation F23-2 is prepared tonight as ordinance 23-3.
We have an email from E. Thomas Baker, dated January 14, 2023, supporting the mayor's appointment of Dr. Sarah Sewell to the Seneca County Board of Health.
Can this email be read in entirety?
Of course.
Thank you.
Dear members of Tiffin City Council, I am writing to express my support for Mayor Don Yonatuno's appointment of Dr. Sarah Sewell to the Seneca County Board of Health. As a qualified pediatrician, Dr. Sewell brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the board that will greatly benefit the health and well-being of our community. As you may know, the Board of Health plays a vital role in protecting the public health of our county by developing policies and programs to prevent and control diseases, promoting healthy behaviors, and ensuring that the community has access to high-quality health care services. Dr. Sewell's expertise in pediatrics, combined with her dedication to the community, makes her an excellent candidate for the board. I strongly urge you to approve Mayor Yonatuno's appointment of Dr. Sarah Sewell to the Seneca County Board of Health. Her appointment will ensure that the board has the knowledge and expertise necessary to effectively address the health needs of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, H. Thomas Baker.
Thank you. This letter will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And then we have mayor's letter of appreciation to the Tiffin Community Foundation for their $22,000 grant from the Access to Recreation Fund to be used for improvements on the South River Road Trail.
Thank you. This will be held on file in the clerk's office as well.
And that concludes the written communications.
Did you need to add the letter from the finance director?
I could do that as well, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Tonight, we added the agenda change memo with a letter from the Director of Finance, dated January 4, listing the unclaimed funds for the attached list that she sent.
Perfect, thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. As a reminder, whoever is going to be the first person up there, just as a reminder, there is a five-minute time limit per person, so, thank you.
My name's Chad. I'm stopping in from Southern Care Hospice. We wanted to stop out to ask permission to hang yellow ribbons, building awareness to Vietnam Veterans Day, which is March 29. We'd like to hang the ribbons along South Washington Street between the Memorial Park down to the Civil War Museum. We would hang the ribbons with our volunteers from March, on March 22, and keep them up for two weeks, and then return to take them down. And we did bring along one of the ribbons that we would hang to the poles. A lot of people are not aware of Vietnam Veterans Day. It's often very confused with Veterans Day in November, so as part of our partnership with We Honor Veterans, we look to do our yellow ribbon hanging in the communities that we serve.
I don't have any opposition to this request. Is anyone on council or mayor, as well as city administrator, do you, any?
No, I simply request you contact my office so we can coordinate that with our Public Works Department.
I appreciate that. It's gonna be one of my questions if I could have had somebody to, as a main contact. I appreciate that. Thank you. And this was his card, or?
You can contact me, we'll make sure you get.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you for doing that. That's incredible. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys. I'll finish.
No worries. Take your time.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Okay, all right. If there's no one else, we will move into motions. Are there any motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
We have resolution number 22-43, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Dr. Sarah Sewell, D.O., to serve a term on the Seneca County Board of Health from January 1, 2023, until December 31, 2027.
This is the third reading of resolution 22-43. Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of resolution 22-43.
There's a motion for passage of resolution 22-43. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second for passage of resolution 22-43. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Third reading of 22-43. I just wanted city council to know I did my homework. I requested through the mayor a copy of the resume for Sarah Sewell, or Dr. Sewell, stand corrected. I just wanted to learn more about her. She was here several weeks ago, introduced herself, talked about her qualifications, so now I know who she is and about her, so I just wanted to let you know. I took someone's advice, and maybe it was all of you. Do some research.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Resolution 22-43 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 23-3, introduced by Ken Jones. Resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2023 of municipally-owned personal property, which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15D, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of resolution 23-3.
Resolution number 23-4, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution appointing Brent T. Howard, Director of Law, as a designee for the city, for Tiffin City Council and its individual members to attend a public records training session for purposes of compliance with ORC 109.43 and 149.43, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of resolution 23-4. Councilmember Perry?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of resolution 23-4.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of resolution 23-4. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner?
Second the motion, Madam.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed the emergency on that.
Oh.
Yep, sorry about that. Can we, let's first vote on the emergency. Apologies.
Councilmember Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Sorry, yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Resolution 23-4 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-2, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate $290,000 into the capital improvement City Hall budget in order to pay for the Finance Department renovations.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-2. Councilmember Reesner?
Yes, I move to move for the immediate passage of ordinance 23-2, suspending council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 23-2. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, I just, just a little clarification. Is this $290, what we budgeted for that, or is that, we just need to move it into the account to get it paid? Is that what I'm?
It's about $3,500 more than the original.
Okay, we're really close.
Things that happened during the construction.
I get that, okay. I was just curious, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Resolution, or, excuse me, ordinance 23-2 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance 23-3, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $39,037.7 into the Police, Park, and Recreation and Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission budgets.
This is the first reading of ordinance 23-3. Councilmember Reesner?
I move for the immediate passage of ordinance 23-3, suspending three, city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 23-3. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, for my benefit, these three departments here, how did it come out right to the penny? Ends up in seven cents. I just don't need a specific, but just a general thing. And I know finance director Kaufman's good about going right to the penny, but you would think some of these would be rounded off, but it would not. And I know she doesn't need my help, but I'm asking anyways.
Yeah, that's just how the total ended up being, actually. All those different things that came in all added together.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-3 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
And that concludes the ordinances.
Thank you. We are now under other businesses. Is there any other business to come before? Council, Councilmember Thacker?
Yes, I'd like to schedule a time so we can meet with Street Sidewalk Sewer, so if everybody could pull out their calendars.
I'm not texting, I'm getting my calendar out.
Thank you. Thank you for that confirmation.
Just so you know.
Clarification.
Is there a certain time of day or a certain day of the week that works best with people's time right now? I'm a little restricted with time. I'm in a musical, so I have to be there at 6:00 PM every evening, except for Tuesday.
Are you in it or directing it?
I'm in it.
Yay, fun.
5:00 AM works.
5:00 AM does, I don't get up till 8 o'clock, so any time after.
I know that, yeah.
Something.
You set the time, and I'll work with it.
Okay, what about the 23rd, so next Monday, at 5:15 PM?
And I have a memo about it. It'll be long.
It's going to be long? Okay.
Do you want to adjust that time? You have to be there by 6:00, you said?
I'll be late.
Okay.
It's okay.
Jessica.
I would like to announce a Street Sidewalk Sewer meeting at 5:15 PM in council chambers on January 23rd to discuss mayor's request for legislation 22, I'm sorry, 23-3, 23-4, 23-5, and any other business that comes before the committee.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Jones.
Thacker?
Sorry, sometimes I just think my mouth says your name, since you just always raise your hand.
No, no.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Councilman Thacker, could you end this meeting before 7:00 o'clock, because the Ritz is playing The Wizard of Oz, and I was hoping to, I don't remember it. Thank you.
Could have picked a different day.
Councilmember Perry?
Yeah. To me. What we designated the law director to go to for the Sunshine Training about three years ago, I had to go on behalf of myself and the council president, and she has yet to get me back, so I would like to nominate Bridgette to go to Sunshine.
Doesn't even make sense. We just passed.
I know, but I wanted, I wanted to get one back.
Would have been funnier if you did it before we passed.
I know, I tried. You didn't see my hand. But anyways, as far as the Personnel and Labor, I have absolutely no objections unless somebody else in the committee does to the appointments of Mr. Dutrow and Mary Franks. Does anybody care to have a meeting? Nope. And just a little side note, too, got to talk to Mrs. Franks' last meeting a little bit. What a wonderful lady. They have their own, like, family business where they do that, the freeze, the candy and stuff, the Skittles and all that, which my kids love, and she actually went to lunch with my mom last week, so.
Friends.
Yeah, they're friends. But yeah, that's all I got.
Yes.
To follow up on that, I also spoke with her after the last meeting, and that's how we discovered she'd be an awesome fit for the ADA Committee and talked to her about it, and that's why she was brought forward for that committee.
Awesome.
Any other business to come before council this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you all. We will adjourn, and have a good evening.
Is this a record tally?
No. 27 minutes. I think it's all.
It might be. I just want...